Good evening, hello and welcome you all with the news today. This is your prime time destination news, newsmakers talking points. The big talking point is coming from the special session of parliament that began today amidst a lot of speculation. Is it time to celebrate or introspect as parliament prepares to move to an all-new building? That's going to be our big talking point. We'll be joined by India's oldest living parliamentarian, Dr. Karan Singh became an MP 1967. That's right, all those years ago, he'll tell us the best and the worst moments of parliament. But first, as always, it's time for the nine headlines at nine. Crucial cabinet meeting conclude suspense over special session bills in parliament still remains. Opposition questions, why agenda not revealed? Prime Minister Modi claims historic decisions are going to be taken. After an emotional goodbye to the old parliament building special session to shift to a new sunset. Tomorrow move comes on auspicious Ganesh Chaturthi. Encounter enters its sixth day in Jammu and Kashmir. Anantnak security forces carrying out DNA test of a terrorist whose charred body was recovered from the valley on Sunday. The killing of two security officers in less than seventy-two hours has jolted strife torn state Manipur. Governor orders a probe into the killing. Chief Minister N. Bireen Singh assures security to victims' family members. Trouble mounts for the BJP AIDMK alliance in Tamil Nadu. AIDMK leader Jaikumar declares there is no tie-up with the Sapphren Party. Blames BJP TN chief Anam Malai for the discord. Kaveri water wars boil over another setback for the Karnataka government. Kaveri Water Management Authority orders state to release 5,000 Cusex of Kaveri water to Tamil Nadu. Tamil Nadu governor Ravi hits out at the DMK says jihadis want to eradicate Sanatan Dharm. Yoga guru Ramdev says abusing Hinduism will fail in 2024. Another twist to the Adani Hindenburg saga petition alleges conflict of interest in Supreme Court appointed panel urges the apex court to constitute a fresh committee. And the Indian squad for the upcoming ODI series ahead of the World Cup against Australia has announced Rohit Sharma Virat Kohli rested for the first two ODIs. R. Ashwin included for the series. But the big story that we are breaking this Monday night, the cabinet meeting chaired by Prime Minister Modi has ended a short while ago. With the Prime Minister hinting at a historic decision that is said to be taken. Will women's quota become a reality is the big question that's being asked. A lot of speculation over that, but no confirmation amidst conflicting reports over whether women's reservation could be on the agenda. Joining me now, Aishwarya Pariwal joins me live. Aishwarya, a lot of speculation because here starts the special session of parliament, 6:30 PM. Prime Minister convenes a cabinet meeting and earlier he had spoken of historic decisions to be taken. And people thought this could be women's reservation. What are you hearing in terms of what is likely over the next forty-eight hours?
Well, you know Rajdeep, one thing that I can tell you is that this is one very, very tightly guarded secret. From what we understand, the cabinet briefing is over, the Prime Minister is now leaving. But yes, senior leaders are now inside the parliament building. Some of them are having a meeting there, some senior leaders, in fact, a group of them are also at JP Nada's house. So definitely, you know, we are seeing meetings galore. Everyone is now keenly looking at tomorrow morning because that's when we will exactly get to know what was discussed in the cabinet. Though you know, from what we are understanding at the point, at the moment, a point of discussion and one thing that was clearly discussed was the women's reservation bill. One nation, one election is also something that was being, you know, some of the leaders spoke about that also. But yes, what has got the stamp of the cabinet is something that we all are keenly watching. But it is one of the fiercely guarded secrets, that much I can tell you till about now. From what we understand, tomorrow is the day when we will get more clarity. But yes, something historic, definitely Rajdeep, that much I can tell you, something historic is definitely in the works.
Okay, we'll wait and see what that slice of history is. As I said, women's reservation bill has gone through many ups and downs. But the Prime Minister can surprise you. When you think that it's women's reservation, don't be surprised if it's something quite different is all I can say at the moment. We'll wait and see what that cabinet meeting eventually decides. Remember, because parliament is on, any policy decisions have to be placed before parliament. No cabinet briefing has taken place. Now, all of this is coming against the backdrop of the first day of a special session of parliament. That in a way marks the end of an old order and the start of a new. Because tomorrow, our parliamentarians will shift from the old parliament building to the new. Prime Minister Modi today bid farewell to the old building complex praising many of his predecessors, including Jawala Nehru. While citing iconic speeches of past prime ministers, also recounting the day when he entered the parliament as a first-time MP. The opposition too had their moment. Tomorrow, the focus shifts to the new parliament building. First, take a look at what happened in the old one, one last time.
Pandit Nehruji, Satriji, Vahasa lekar ke Atalji, Manmohan Singh ji tak. Ek bahut badi shrank tha, jisne is sadhan ka netru to kiya hai. Aur sadhan ke maadham se desh ko disha diye hai. Desh ko nayi rang rup me dhaanne ke liye, unhone parisham kiya hai, purshart kiya hai. Aaj, un satta gavro ghana karne ka bhi aushara hai. Yeh woh sadhan hai, jaha Pandit ji ko isliye bhi yaad kiya hai, haneek baaton ke liye yaad karega, lekin hum juru yaad karenge. Isi sadhan mein, Pandit Nehru ka, at the stroke of midnight ki gunch, hum sabko preerid karti rahegi. Isi sadhan mein Atal ji ne kaha tha, shabda aaj bhi gun raha hai is sadhan mein. Sarkare aayegi, jaayegi, partya banegi, bigreegi, lekin yeh desh rehna chahiye. Atal Bhai Riwajpoyji ka net, sarkar bhi humne isi sadhan dekhi, sabhi shiksha bhi aaya. Desh me aaj woh mahakapun ban gaya hai. Adivasi karle, mantrale Atal ji ne bana hai, north east ka mantrale Atal ji ne bana hai. Nuclear trace, Bharat ke samarthka parichaya ek ban gaya hai. Main pehli bar jab, sansad ka sadh se bana, aur pehli bar ek sansad ke rup me hai. Is bhavan me maine pravesh kiya, to sahad rup se. Maine is sansad bhavan ke door, pakthi par, apna sheesh juka karke. Is logtantra ke mandir ko, shraddha bhav se naman karti bhi maine pair rakhna tha. Uppal mere liye bhavana ho se bari huhi thi, Bharat ke logtantra ki taqat hai. Bharat ke samaney manvi ke logtantra ke prati shraddha ka prati bim hai. Ki railway platform par, gujarah karne wala ek gharib parivar ka bachcha, parliament ho gaya. Maine kabhi kalpana tak nahi thi, ki desh mujhe itana samman dega, itana aashirbaat dega, itana pyaar dega. Socha nahi tha Atal ji. G twenty ki sahhalta, ekso chaliis koror desh vaachon ki hai. Yeh Bharat ke sahhalta hai, kisi vyakti ki sahhalta nahi hai, kisi dal ki sahhalta nahi hai. Bharat ke federal structure ne, Bharat ke vivyadha ne, saath sano par, doso se adhik samik. Aur uski majbani, Hindustan ke alag-alag rang rup me, desh ke alag-alag sarkaron ne. Bade aan ban shansha ki, chandrayaan teen ki sahhalta. Na sirf pura Bharat, pura desh abhi bhoot hai. Aur isme, Bharat ke samarthka, ek naya rup, jadhunita se jooda hai. Jo vijyan se jooda hai, jo technology se jooda hai, jo ekso chaliis koror desh vaachon ke sankalp ki shakti se jooda hua hai.
Mahela reservation ka bill aana chahiye aur mahelao ko dena chahiye, jo due hai. Nehru ji ke pradhanmantri kaal me, pehli logsaba me, keval, woh bhi 5% sansad mahela hai thi. Lekin settar saal ke baad bhi aaj, chaudha, pandra, das ke andar hi hai. To isliye main aapse gujarish karunga, ki is mahelao ka jo bill hai, isko aap ye kar dijiye. Atal ji ne, apne karekal me, ikis bar bayan diya, 6 saal me. Doctor Manmohan Singh ji ne, 30 bar bayan diya. Keval hamare mojood PM sahab, mojooda PM sahab, hi aise hai, jo sadhan me, 9 saalo me, customeri bayanon ko chod ke, keval do bar bolay. Ye democracy, ye democracy hai sahab, ab isko kya, kaisa sudarthe, main aapko hi chod diata hu.
So it's a good moment to step back and look at the state of our parliament. Is this an occasion to celebrate or introspect as parliament prepares to move from the old to the new? Now first to look at the number of sittings, because I think that will reflect how parliament has changed. Logsaba, the first one, 1952 to 1957, Jawala Nehru was India's Prime Minister. 677 sittings, that is more than 100 sittings per year, 125 sittings per year. Then you go to 1957 to 62, Nehru again Prime Minister, there were 581 sittings. Now turn to the most recent, under Prime Minister Modi, 2014 to 2019, the sittings came down to 331. In 2019 to today, there have been just 247 sittings. This includes of course the fact that we had the Covid year in 2020, when there were very few sittings of parliament. The truth of the matter is, just look at how India has changed. From the 50s and 60s, when parliament would meet regularly, to today. Bills sent to committees, in the 14 Logsaba, from 2004 to 2009, 60% of the bills would go to these select committees. In the 15th, it was 71%, Manmohan Singh was Prime Minister. Under Prime Minister Modi, it's come down to 25% of the bills are sent for scrutiny and review. In the 17 Logsaba, it's gone even lower, 17.6%. Bills passed by both houses, in the first Logsaba, 333 bills were passed. In the second Logsaba, 327 bills were passed. In the third, 272 were passed, in the fourth, 216. In the fifth, 482, the highest ever, this was the emergency period, mind you. 6th, 130, 7th, 329, 8th, 334, 9th, 63, 10th, 277, 11th, 61, 12th, 56, 13th, 297, 14th, 248, 15th, 179. It's come down now to 140, in the previous Logsaba, now it's 189. Either way, again you are seeing fewer bills being passed now than ever before. Time spent on questions, percentage of total working hours, 1952 to 57, 15%. 2004 to 2009, number of questions has, percentage of questions has come down to 11% and it is now steadily declining. So working hours have also declined, as you can see there. Over time, parliament simply time spent on questions is also being reduced. My first guest today is Dr. Karan Singh. He is the oldest living parliamentarian because he was in parliament in 1967, two years after I was born. Welcome Dr. Singh to the show, thank you very much for joining me. Tell me what it was like in those days, as the country celebrates 75 years. If I may be prepared to, and moves to a new building tomorrow, parliament celebrates 75 years, moves to a new building. Your thoughts, what does this parliament mean for you? Tell us what it was like when you joined in 1967.
Well, let me tell you that before I joined, I used to fly down every year to listen to Jawaharlal ji's response to the foreign affairs debate. So I only watched those from the gallery, but that was my first introduction to parliament. Then in 1967, I became a member of the fourth Logsaba. And at that time, there was a lot of talent in the opposition. After Pandit ji left, a whole new group of people came into the cabinet with Indira Gandhi. And none of them, I think, were really outstanding, eloquent parliamentarian. They were all very able people, Babuji even Ram was there, Murajibai. But you know, they weren't orators, but in the, in the opposition, Hiran Mukherjee, he was my favorite speaker. He's brilliant, the way he spoke, the way he marshaled his facts and his language. He was also a Sanskritist by the way. Then there was, Indraji Gupta was there, and the one who was speaker later, he was there. And then we had Madhulimey from the Socialist Party, very, very dangerous opposition person. Who, bada kashat deta tha, he used to really give a lot of trouble. Then there was my dear friend Nath Pai, a brilliant speaker, really eloquent and you know. So these were the sort of people we had then in the Logsaba.
Very interesting, all these names you are suggesting, most of them communist socialist. Hiran Mukherjee, Nath Pai, Madhulimey, the great communist socialist orators in parliament. You mentioned all these great names. How difficult for you was it to be a young government minister in those days answering questions that were put in by all these opposition figures? Because that was the age of debate.
Well, of course, every minister, as you know, has to answer the Logsaba only once a week and the Rajsaba once a week. But it was difficult, but I always enjoyed doing it because I liked my portfolio, which was tourism and civil aviation. And I had a good grip over that, although there were several incidents, I don't have to mention them here. But they were all very kind to me for some reason. Even Jyotir Moi Bhosu, he used to send me Mistry Dhahi, if you please, from Calcutta. He was a very powerful man, sab usse darate the, but he was very fond of me. I think they all had a soft corner for me. Hiranta was very kind, very generous. To mujhe tang nahi karthe, tang agar mujhe kisi ne kiya, to Rajsaba me, the socialist, the so-called young Turk, Chandrashekar, Krishna Khanth and Mohan Dharaya. They were very bitterly against me personally. So that was much more difficult than in the Rajsaba.
If I may ask though, Dr. Singh, you saw parliament in the 21st century, you saw it in the 20th. What's been the biggest difference between parliament then and now?
First of all, this whole habit of going into the well of the house, which in, to my view, is totally un-parliamentarian. I mean, you cannot do that, you cannot disrupt parliament, for God's sake, that's our highest body. Marghe this, everybody rushing into the well of the house at the drop of a hat. I mean, this is something that was most undesirable and which never, never used to happen earlier. I mean, there were very strong opposition people, but they would never dream of rushing into the well of the house. So that's one great difference. The second difference seems to me to be that the sort of structured debates that used to take place, those are not taking place now. There are sporadic debates, somebody speaks for a while. A good structured debate in parliament, Rajdeep, is an excellency, whether in the Logsaba or in the Rajsaba. Structured debate means there is certainly clear timing given to each party. They know they've got to speak to that extent and the minister then gives a reply. Now those structured debates are very important, number one. Number two, the committee system is absolutely central to our parliamentary function. Because the real work is often done in the committees. Advantage there is, there is no television, so Rajdeep isn't there. So the result is, we can speak what we want to speak, without fear of everybody listening in. So the committee system seems to have gradually evaporated, which is a great pity. And the third thing that I have noticed is disruption of the question hour. The question hour is sacred. In the House of Commons, for example, the question hour, because that is where the common MP, who is not a minister, gets a chance to ask a question and to ask supplementary. So rushing into the well of the house, diminution of the committee system and disruption of question hour. These three are horrific developments in the 21st century.
Very well, very well spoken, sir. Would I be right though in saying that the darkest hour of parliament in the years that you were a member of parliament was the emergency, 1975? And if I were to ask you also, what for you was the most glorious moment you saw in parliament, what would that be?
Well, I'll tell you both, I was there for both. The first one, I agree with you, that the emergency was a very, very dark chapter. And fundamental rights were suspended and all, I'm not going to go into that. Everybody is aware of what happened, thousands of people were arrested and all, it was terrible. But the finest hour was Bangladesh. When the war was going on, people were waiting, Indira Gandhi very seldom showed any emotion. But that day, she almost ran into the house, my seat used to come almost exactly behind her. She ran into the house almost and said, Mr. Speaker, I have a announcement to make. House fell deadly, deathly silent. Mr. Speaker, Dhaka is now the free capital of a free country and the house exploded. You cannot imagine, Rajdeep, how much joy there was for us in the creation of Bangladesh. We were all involved in our own way. And I don't think now generations can realize what a victory that was. Fifteen days, Mahabharata took eighteen days, our troops did in fifteen days. And the surrender of General Niyazi with 72,000 troops and 90,000 kilometers of land, it was a tremendous moment. And that, I think, was the most glorious moment that I've come upon.
You know, wonderful to hear you speak about that, 1971, as you saw parliament, of course, the tragedy of 75, the dark hour. But there were also some great speeches over the years. I remember personally, Wajpoyji's speech in 1996, during which he lost the confidence vote. Any speech that strikes out, any favorite speech, you've seen it all from Nehru to Prime Minister Modi? Any speech of Prime Minister who stands out?
Well, it's very difficult really to zero in on any particular speech. I know that Atal ji spoke very well and Narinder Bhai is a very great orator also, there's no doubt about that. No, I don't think I can remember a particular, I can remember, I'll tell you, there was a debate on privipers, if you please. And I was a priviper holder and I was on the side of the government. So all the other princes looked upon me as a traitor and I remember my speech. For some reason, I don't remember other people's speeches, I remember my speech on that occasion. And I remember my farewell speech in the Rajsaba. These are memorable speeches for me, very egoistic for me to remember my own speeches, but that is what I remember most of all.
What is the best thing, Dr. Singh, about being a member of parliament? And what is the most difficult thing to be a member of parliament?
Well, the best thing about being a member of parliament is that you get to help the people in your constituency. And that five crores of rupees that we used to get, started getting, to spend in our constituency or to take one village, adopt a village and so on, that is very, very useful. Because that was greatly appreciated and one kept in touch with the public all the time. So when you're an MP, you can't just sit in Delhi, you've got to keep in touch with the public. The difficult part is of course, that you must behave yourself, you mustn't shout and scream. So that's not difficult for me, it is maybe well disciplined. But for some people who are compulsive speakers, they find it very difficult not to speak.
One, one final question, if you had a message for today's generation of MPs or wannabe MPs, what would that be? As I said, you've been part of that great generation, when we had those terrific socialist, communist, Jan Sangh, Congress speakers, debates of the 60s and 70s. What would your message be to today's parliamentarians?
You see, the message, my message to parliamentarians is, please do not disrupt parliament. That is my one and only message. If you disrupt parliament, apne pair pe kulhadi mar raha hu. You're members of parliament, for God's sake, how can you disrupt parliament? That is to my mind, the biggest request, very respectfully, which I would make to present parliamentarians. They may or may not appreciate it, but please do not disrupt the house. Let the house function, speak as whatever you like, speak very strongly, call the government over the calls, get every minister, get them, but do not disrupt the house.
Very well spoken, Dr. Singh, fine words, I hope parliamentarians are listening. Just in conclusion, do you ever remember running into the well of the house in your long career over 50 years? Did you ever go into the well of the house?
No, I, I, Rajdeep, I wouldn't dream of going into the well of the house.
Okay, wonderful to talk to you, Dr. Singh, all those rich memories that you have. And I thank you so much for joining me there, you're there in Srinagar and thanks very much for sharing us.
Okay, thank you, thank you Rajdeep.
That was Dr. Karan Singh, the oldest living parliamentarian, 67. I don't know anyone who's been around who was a parliamentarian in 1962. But as Dr. Singh says, much has changed, unfortunately for the worse. And that's why I want to turn to my talking point. Is this time to celebrate or introspect? Parliament role, is it getting diminished? How do you make parliament more productive? Just some of the questions I'm going to raise. Trilochan Shastri is chairman, association for democratic reforms, they look at these issues closely. Sayad Zafar Islam is BJP's spokesperson, former MP. And Ajay Kumar is Congress spokesperson and former MP. Let me come to each of you for your comments. Why don't you start Ajay Kumar first? Because the Congress in a way has been in parliament, in the treasury benches for the longest time in these 75 years. Now you're in the opposition and you all are the ones who are accused of running into the well of the house. Karan Singh says he never ran into the well of the house in 50 years, he's saying, please don't disrupt parliament, don't disrupt question hour. Haat jod ke, he's saying.
Look, Rajdeep, I think the issue is, the deterioration and fundamentally, and I'm, and I know it sounds political. But I don't think ever in the history of the parliament, we have had such a confrontational government. You know, we had UPA 1, UPA 2, there were issues, there were, you know, Mr. Jaitli did those famous sit hours and Sushma Swarajji defended it. But then also it was not so acrimonious. It was never that the journalists were not allowed in the central hall. So we, it's very combative for the first time. I mean, even before 2014, there were lots of, you know, people rushing into the well and all. But there was a general born homie. Now if you're, if you are, you know, caught, if I'm caught talking to Zafar Islam at the central hall, it would, it would be dangerous for me or it would be dangerous for Zafar Islam. That's for anybody to decide, but that's different issue. So that, the basic issue is the level of discussion is gone. I'll just give you a couple of data.
Why rush into the well of the house? You're not answering my question. I concede that you need to hold the government to account. Is the only way to rush into the well of the house?
So let me ask you a question. When these, when the business committee sits and decides what should be the agenda, look at the special session, did you know the agenda? Did anybody know the agenda? And you're saying, don't rush into the house, respect democracy, but I will beat you up, get into a boxing ring, I'll tie your shoelace, I'll tie your hands. And then you said, be the gentleman like Mr. Dr. Karan Singh is saying. Did you know the agenda? Did anybody in India know the agenda except for those two people? And is that a special session should be conducted like this on 75 years of Indian democracy? So my question again is, you will push everyone to the wall and say, don't rush to the well. My God, the government has got the responsibility to take the opposition and we are ready to go not halfway, more than halfway. But the problem is this, I mean, can you imagine, you have a special session which you didn't know, I didn't know, nobody knew.
That's, that's a good point, let, let me take that point to Zafar Islam. Zafar Islam, you expect the opposition to quote-unquote behave itself, but the government's attitude to parliament. Today, Malikarjun Kharghe said, this has been the Prime Minister who has attended the fewest sittings of parliament, given the fewest speeches over a period of time. And the special session is on, but we still don't know what is this mysterious historic agenda? You're keeping the opposition and even your own government ministers in the dark. So how does that further parliamentary democracy? If at the last moment, you're going to bring in something into the agenda in the next couple of days?
Well, Rajdeep, why they are speculating, I don't understand. Their job as a parliamentarian is not to speculate, but also the agenda which is known to them, they should prepare themselves for the debate on the floor of the. They should prepare themselves for the debate on the floor of the Parliament. While the discretion lies with the government that they have the discretion, if they want to introduce any bill, they can. Because that constitution does give them flexibility to introduce any bill should they feel like introducing to the Parliament. But as far as the agenda has been made it very clear to these people, I think they should focus on the agenda which has been known to them, which has been shared with them.
No, no, but what if, Zafar by one minute, Zafar by one minute. Zafar by whatever the last moment, something is brought in and you say, "No, no, let's debate it at the last, you know, we are inserting it, slipping it into the agenda tomorrow, day after and we've got to debate it." A, plus as I showed and I'll play those graphics again, this is the Lok Sabha with the fewest sittings, fewest questions asked, fewest bills being passed. I mean somewhere surely that calls for introspection, where is the celebration?
Well, if at all, somebody has to introspect, it is the opposition bench. Because as Dr. Karan was saying, that it is very unfortunate that the opposition bench, the only thing they want to disrupt the Parliament, that is the only priority they have. They are not interested in any debate, they are not interested in any discussion on the floor of the Parliament. What interests them is the disruption of the Parliament and somehow they should be seen on the television that they are disrupting the Parliament.
But that's exactly Zafar Islam, with due regard, that's exactly what Arun Jaitli, that's exactly what you did when you were in the opposition between 2009 and 2014 in particular. Arun Jaitli in fact said, "Disruption, obstruction is a legitimate parliamentary tactic."
See, dancing in the veil, dancing on the table in front of the chair, has Mr. Jaitli done that? Mr. Jaitli was always advocating of having a discussion, debate. And if the ruling party is not interested in debate, then you can resort to all this disrupting the Parliament. But we are always ready for the discussion. It is the opposition bench who are not keen to discuss. We discuss everything in Business Advisory Committee and next morning they have to discuss all those issues on the floor of the Parliament. But the moment you enter, the slogan starts, then they will come to the wall, then they will start shouting and eventually they will disrupt the Parliament.
With due regard, the running of the Parliament is the responsibility of the Treasury benches. But a quick word from you Ajay Kumar and then I'll go to Dr. Shastri, quick word, yes.
So, I just want to point out to Zafar G. When I was in the Parliament, the BJP was in opposition and they were rushing into the well all the time, including Mr. Jaitli and Sushma Swarajji. And they were sending all their people down to the floor of the, to the well of the Lok Sabha and Raj Sabha. It's recorded, they can see empty number of people, it's the most important part.
Because they did it, you don't have to do it. Remember the Tengana, when the Tengana statehood bill was passed, the lights were switched off. So you see, all of you combined have destroyed Parliament one by one.
Rajiv, let me complete, I'm not justifying. Okay, so first question, I hope the Parliament as a personal view and as a party view, that we should, we want the Parliament to run. But most important part is, this is the only Parliament which is reduced to sending the bills to the standing committee. There is no study of any bill, the worst legislation possible in the world is being passed. The standing committee, seventy-one percent earlier, now thirteen percent. What will generations of Indians pay the price for this arrogant government which refuses to study bills in great details? So that its implementation of that bill doesn't lead to disaster to the common man? And seventy-one percent earlier, now thirteen percent? The Prime Minister has spoken in nine years only twice, except vote on thanks, only twice! Only twice in nine years, except the vote of thanks. A motion of thanks to the President. So my question is, yeah, only twice. So it's, and Manonji, Manon Singhji spoke thirty times. Vajpayee G spoke twenty-one times in five years. So my question is, what speeches? Yeah, Zafar G comes and gives us this great eloquent basher of democracy and we want love democracy, they do everything opposite.
Let me bring in Dr. Shastri, because you know, we'll have these two views, extreme views. Dr. Shastri, do you sense as someone who's looking closely through the Association of Democratic Reforms at Parliament, that this is a moment where Parliament needs restructuring? It doesn't need a new building, we need a new parliamentary culture.
You see Rajiv, you have raised a very important issue and I am very happy to hear the views of both the Congress and the BJP honorable members of Parliament and of those parties. But you know, I am going to speak as a citizen if I am allowed to do so. And as a citizen, I am going to go by the Parliament's own method of introducing a bill. Usually a bill is introduced in first hearing, second reading and third reading. And at any stage, it can be referred to a standing committee. The standing committee can take expert opinion. And after taking expert opinion, it can also ask general public for their opinion. And even in the second reading, there are two hearings. And after the third hearing, then the bill is passed. So you know, as a citizen, I want to ask a simple question. We have been independent from the British rule for seventy-five years, which is a jolly good thing. How many times has a special Parliament session been held? And we here, and we don't know as citizens, that perhaps something like eight bills are going to be introduced and perhaps passed because the government is in majority. And what are those bills which are going to affect the citizens of the country? Nobody still knows. So why is this secrecy there? Why is there not a open discussion on how we are going to take this great country forward? And why is the public not informed? And why is this being done in such a hurry? This is something that is a matter of concern to ordinary citizens. So I will just stop Rajiv at this point.
No, but if you wanted a reform, Dr. Shastri, if you wanted one major reform, what would that be? To make Parliament more productive, what would that be?
I think that in a true democracy, any new legislation, the government certainly has a right to introduce a new bill. But it must be through wide consultation and through, you know, asking for suggestions from the standing committee, from the opposition parties, from the public in general. And there must be a reasonable debate based on facts, not by rushing into the well. I am also in favor of not rushing into the well. Although, you know, one can see all sides of the debate because both the BJP and the Congress over the years have been rushing into the well and both are defending their points. But that's, as a citizen, I think this is not what we want to do. So what reform, that is a basic question Rajiv, you are asking. The reform we would like is a parliamentary discussion on new bills which is based on facts, which is based on public discussion, which is based on the good of the country. The great fear is that every time a bill is introduced, there is a political agenda. There could be a political agenda, we added. When this secrecy is there, the secrecy about what are those eight bills? The public of India don't know what are those eight bills. When the secrecy is there, obviously the public will think that why is this not being told to us? What are those bills which are going to affect my day-to-day life? Why are we not informed about it? I think that is a matter of concern and Parliament should follow all these procedures which are laid down in the parliamentary procedure. I mean, I'm just reading out from the, how a bill gets, this is from the Lok Sabha. This is the Lok Sabha procedure for introducing a bill. I would request that we follow those procedures and not get into tutu-mai-mai, Congress versus BJP.
I take your point sir.
And just have.
I think you've given us one reform, at least keep the bills. I don't know how many citizens are looking closely at Parliament, that's my worry. Many citizens have also switched off Parliament, which is very worrying at times. I want a final question from you, the answer therefore from Zafar Islam. Just get rid of the secrecy. Let's have all-party meetings before Parliament where these bills are, you know, the agenda is shared in a more transparent manner, what's the problem? Remember how Article 370 was pushed through at the last moment in 2019? There needs to be meaningful debate. Even budgets of this country are being passed without debate sir, can that change, Zafar Bhai?
See, mindset has to change. Like I just heard Dr. Ajay Kumar, that he said that in the central hall, if you talk to somebody from the BJP, there'll be problem for him. In our party, there is no such mindset. In fact, we have been encouraged always to interact with every other parliamentarian from any other political parties. Because the work you are doing, that should be known to them and they will not disrupt the Parliament. Unfortunately, their agenda is to disrupt the Parliament and sometime it is purposely done it. And they have no intention of discussing.
So you're saying the secrecy is because the government, you're saying the secrecy is because the government fears otherwise the opposition will disrupt a bill, which is unfortunately reveals the lack of trust between the government and the opposition. Democracy is based on trust. You need the citizens to trust our MPs and our MPs to trust each other, that trust has gone. Which is why I said, today is a day for introspection, not necessarily celebration. I appreciate my guest joining me on my big talking point this evening. Let's turn from there to our big ground report and it comes from Anant Nag. Where we went at day six of that encounter with terrorists. Security forces carrying out DNA test to confirm the identity of the terrorist whose body was recovered on Sunday. JNK LG Manoj Sinha has met the family of the martyr DSP Humayubat to express his condolences. Why is it taking so long to flush out the terrorists? That's our report from the ground.
The Anant Nag encounter entered the sixth day on Monday. Two to three terrorists are still believed to be holed up in the forest of Okanak. After the charred body of a terrorist was retrieved from a hideout on Sunday, security forces are trying to confirm his identity. The security forces believe the body could be of terrorist Uzair Ahmed Khan, an alleged member of the Lashkare Taba. DNA test is being conducted to ascertain the terrorist's identity. Meanwhile, Jamun Kashmir Lieutenant Governor Manoj Sinha met the family of DSP Humayubat, who was killed in action during the Anant Nag encounter. Expressing his condolences, he assured the family of all assistance and support from the administration. Earlier, the Lieutenant Governor had asserted that the deaths of the Indian Braves will be avenged soon. Security forces are in a final push to flush out all the terrorists involved in the attack that killed three soldiers and a police officer. With Kamaljit Sandhu and Ashraf Wani in Srinagar, Bureau Report, India Today.
Let's turn from JNK to our other ground report that comes from Manipur, that continues to simmer nearly five months after the violence broke out. Despite the deployment of additional security forces to maintain law and order, there is no respite from the violence. Remember yesterday, an Indian army soldier who was on leave was abducted and later found dead, killed by his assassins. A few days ago, a sub-inspector was suspected to have been killed by a sniper when he was on duty in Chura Chanpur. Security forces are now caught right in the middle of the ethnic clashes. India Today's Indrajeet Kundu has the report.
Manipur is embroiled in an ethnic conflict for months now. The killing of two security officers in less than seventy-two hours has jolted the strife-torn state. Sepoys Sertu Thangthangkum, an Indian Army Javan, deployed at the Lemakong Military Station, was abducted from his own home in Imphal West. The soldier, who survived by his wife and two children, was on leave when he was abducted by unidentified gunmen at about ten AM on Saturday. The sole eyewitness to the crime is the victim's ten-year-old son.
He opened the door and I saw him.
What did you see?
I saw my father.
How did you see?
I saw him lying on the bed. He saw a small gun in his hand. And they mixed black, white, green color.
Mixed red.
Yes, marks were there.
There was no news of the Sepoys Kum till Sunday morning, when his body was recovered with a single bullet wound on the forehead.
They didn't find what is the truth, what is the reason, why they are killing my husband? Until and unless, without knowing that we will never take the dead body.
Last Wednesday, a Manipur police officer was shot dead allegedly by a sniper. Thirty-five-year-old sub-inspector Onkumang Haukip died after unidentified miscreants opened fire in Chura Chanpur on Wednesday afternoon. Manipur governor has ordered a probe into the killings. And CM N Birin Singh has assured security to members of Kum community as well as government jobs to the family of the slain officers. With Indrajeet Kundu, Bureau Report, India Today.
Tonight's Get Real India story, a story that goes beyond the headlines. Last week, a village in Satara district of Maharashtra saw religious hatred and intolerance rear its head. Nurul Hassan, a thirty-one-year-old civil engineer, soon to be a father, was killed in a mob attack on a mosque. The violence was triggered by offensive messages shared on social media. This is not the first time in recent months that Maharashtra has found itself in the crosshairs of communal violence caused by social media messages. It's our ground report tonight.
The Shikalgar family is in mourning. They still can't believe Nurul Hassan is no more. The thirty-year-old civil engineer died in an attack on a masjid in Pusesa Wali village on September 10th. The village in Satara district was tense ever since objectionable posts on Chhatrapati Shivaji and deities were shared on social media. The suspect, Adil Bagwan, was handed over to the police by the Muslim community. While there was tension, the family could never imagine a place of worship would be attacked. Nurul Hassan, though a civil engineer, was out of work and had taken to dairy farming. Nurul had married Aishanur Hassan, an advocate last year. She is pregnant now, the family is facing an uncertain future. Over the last two weeks, there were two incidents of communal violence in Maharashtra. One in Pusesa Wali village and another in Satara town. In both instances, the trigger was objectionable social media posts. With Imtias Mujavar in Satara, Bureau Report, India Today.
The possibility of the women's reservation bill being cleared by the cabinet, that's exactly what's happened. Now confirming, Union Cabinet has cleared the women's reservation bill. It is now almost certain that this bill will be brought in this special session of Parliament. Remember the bill in its original form gives thirty-three percent reservation to women. There's talk of double seats, that is thirty-three percent of the seats could have a male and a woman MP. The exact details of the bill are awaited. Aishwarya Palliwale joins me, Aishwarya, are we clear what the bill contains? Will it be different to the bill that had been? Will it be different to the bill that had been earlier moved and passed in the Rajya Sabha?
Well Rajiv, you know, we still have to wait and what, what exactly will be this new bill, but from what we understand, thirty-three percent is the nod that the cabinet has given and we will see the, the exact form of it tomorrow because tomorrow, of course, we will, we will have the prime minister and then all the other MPs walking from the old building to the new building. But after that, the one thing that will be talked about is this women's reservation bill. We are understanding it is thirty-three percent that has.
So it, so it'll be, it'll be actually tabled tomorrow itself in parliament?
It looks like it Rajiv, at the moment, that there is a high possibility that it could be tabled tomorrow, but it also depends on how much time they have because tomorrow morning at about nine AM, we will see all the people gathering and there'll also be a big photo op of all the MPs in the old parliament building and then there will be that big movement when Prime Minister Modi will be walking from the old parliament building to the new parliament building. So from what we understand till about afternoon, we will see that shift from the old building to the new building. But here's the stamp that the cabinet has given today is for thirty-three percent women reservation.
So that's the big story coming in. The union cabinet has cleared the women's reservation bill, the mahila reservation bill of which so much has been spoken for so long, could now finally be law in this country. Remember, it has taken more than twenty-five years, lots of twists and turns, but now it appears that the Modi government is fulfilling another of its manifesto promises. Remember the opposition will also take some credit. Sonia Gandhi had written to Prime Minister Modi several months ago, saying, we are ready to support you on women's reservation bill. Ke Khavita, the daughter of KCR, the Telingana Chief Minister, had also written to her. We'll be speaking to her in a moment. She was waiting for this announcement, Ke Khavita, before she would speak on it. The fact is, the women's reservation bill, remember Mr Modi has had a huge boost from women voters in recent years. This could be another step forward ahead of the big general elections. The big story, thirty-three percent reservation now could be a reality because within parliament, even the small parties who had objected to it in the past, Rastia Jantada, Samajwadi Party, these do not have the same clout and their new generation leaders have also been careful not to oppose it anymore. Ke Khavita, the TRS leader who has written to the prime minister in recent times, has tried to galvanize support for it. Your first reactions ma'am, to what we are hearing, that the cabinet has cleared women's reservation bill?
Rajiv G, first of all, if they really have cleared it, congratulations to all of us in fact. It is going to help our country strengthen the democracy further. But this government should have announced it properly and they should treat this entire bill with a lot of dignity and respect. The breakings on the TV, the hype since morning, it's all a speculation, but the government should really take everybody, all the parties, all the civil society leaders, everybody into consensus, everybody should be, you know, knowing and understanding what is happening. Why this suspense thriller, I don't understand.
No, no, man, man.
All that is happening for women.
No, ma'am, they're saying, they're, they're saying, you mean to say the manner in which we still don't know, why was it not placed on the agenda earlier?
We must be congratulating each other right now and tomorrow morning there might be nothing because there is no official communication yet. I believe everybody is waiting for a cabinet briefing to happen, which did not. And so there should be something officially communicated about.
Ma'am, but the question will be, you know, there is, all parties have to walk the talk. You have taken up this issue, but your own party, you know, has announced candidates for the Telingana election, hundred and fourteen out of the one-one-nine candidates announced, very few women. So will political parties actually walk the talk, whether it's the BRS, your party in Telingana or any other party?
Part the resolution in the assembly, not now, ten years back. And again, our honourable chief minister and leader had returned to the honourable prime minister, just a couple of days back. We reiterated our commitment towards the issue. We will support in whichever manner the bill is going to come up. But you know, the, the way this is being treated, the substance maintained, unofficial leaks being given, this modus operandi is a little troubling because ultimately we don't want to lose out any rights to the women, all the women's rights, all sections of women's rights should be protected. So there has to be some meaningful discussion, debate, you know, when they introduce the bill, at least they should give more time. And this for it because maybe they'll introduce it and then take up some or the other bahana and not do it. That is a major worry.
So you're saying, your fingers are crossed, your toes are crossed, you're saying you hope that the women's reservation bill will come up in parliament tomorrow and be cleared? There won't be a last-minute hitch? We'll wait and see.
Exactly.
Ke Khavita, we'll get you on the show if, if it's all passed. You are one of many women politicians who's been arguing for this for a while now. Let's see if the politicians walk the talk and what exactly will be the contents of the bill? How will this thirty-three percent reservation work out? Will it actually happen for the next Lok Sabha election that are just eight months away or will this for the future? Either way, that's the big story that's coming on. That's why the news today brings you stories, puts news above the noise. And the big news is our news break is confirmed, women's reservation bill has been cleared by the cabinet. Thanks for watching, you stay well, stay safe, good night, subratri, jahind and should I say, jahim mahila, bye for now.